Where am I?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call our Scottsburg City Council meeting to order. This is the eighth day of March, the year 2021, the year of our Lord. And it is six thirty at night, so we'll have a call to order. Uh, first thing we'll do, let's have a word of prayer. So, uh, we gotta have a word of prayer. Father, we've just come before you. We thank you for this day that you've given unto us. Father, it is a gift from your hand. Let us not take it for granted. Father, uh, we just lift up, uh, we lift up John Hill's family, Father, today, as his brother's going home to you. We pray for your hand of comfort. We pray for your, uh, being with his wife and his family, Father, at this time, with loss for them. And, uh, the word says that you rejoice at the death of your saints. So, Father, uh, we just pray that you be with us at this time. Father, pray for this castle. We pray for your blessing upon it. We pray for wisdom. We pray for discernment. We pray, Father, uh, for insight in all of these things that matter to Scottsburg and the city going forward. By the name we go forward in the strength of Jesus, our Lord and Savior, becoming King. Father, we pray for your protection. We pray for your presence in all these things we do. Give us a servant's heart in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Let's have a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank the Lord, the United States of America. Next thing we'll have is a roll call from our clerk treasurer, Jan Hardy.
A.R.Aimy?
Here.
Chris Albertson? Christian Evans?
Here.
Rick Mann?
Here.
Chuck Rose?
Here.
Bill Huglin?
Here.
Chris Albertson, are you there, sir? That's it, okay. Chris has called in and he was called out on emergency call and was gonna call in as soon as he was free to call in. So, at some point, he may be calling in, just to give everybody a heads up. Uh, okay, we've had the roll call. Now, the next thing is the approval of the minutes of February twenty-second. If you've had time to read through those minutes and you see no typos or changes, we will accept a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes a motion to present the minutes as accepted as her second.
I'll second.
Chuck Rose, second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the flag sign. unanimous. Approved. Next thing is our public comment segment on, uh, uh, for the city of Scottsburg Council. And Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or regular officials. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to come forward and take the microphone and address city council? None? Okay. We'll close the public hearing there. And we're gonna go into the next public hearing on, uh, the award of COVID Small Business Act for the first hearing. And let me give this over to Ms. Jill Siggasser at this point. Ms. Jill, here's your microphone for you. Do you sing as well?
No. How could you want to hear?
I'm sure it would always be yours.
Oh, so I'm Jill Siggasser with Wheatley Group. Uh, and this public hearing is for the Small Business Grant Phase Two that the city of Scottsburg was awarded, uh, late fall of last year. Uh, the requirement is that you have a second public hearing after, uh, the grants have been disbursed, which they were all disbursed prior to the end of the December, January first. The first public hearing was held in July, and that was required before the application. So, this grant, an amount of $250,000, was in immediate response to COVID-19 pandemic. And, um, the city awarded that money to thirty-two businesses for working capital, such as employee salaries, general operating expenses, like regional utilities, uh, inventory, advertising, marketing expenses, uh, anything that was non-construction related. Uh, these funds assisted in the retention of 155 jobs. So, of all those thirty-two businesses, then that helped assist the retention of 155 employees, ninety-five percent of which were filled with low and moderate income persons. So, the requirement was at least fifty-one percent of the jobs that were retained or created had to be filled with low and moderate income persons, and yours are at ninety-five percent. Uh, interested, just to give you an overview of how the program works, interested applicants, uh, the city posts everything on Facebook, a website, and interested applicants dropped off the required copy of the application, required documents, at the, uh, drive-through window here. It went to the clerk treasurer's office. And then there was a, uh, selection committee that was made up of an appointment from the council, an appointment from the mayor's office, and an appointment from the clerk treasurer's office that then went through all the applications. You did get more applications than you had funds to, uh, fulfill all the requests. And so, there was a specific criteria that was set forth in the grant application itself as to how the committee would rank those applications or select those applications. And the applicants that were, uh, restaurants, retail, uh, salons, uh, any of that, uh, personal service that were shut down and as part of the government's executive order, it seems like that, uh, was a lifetime ago, but wasn't that long ago, uh, received priority, along with minority and veteran-owned businesses, which was, uh, something that you were able to do through the grant application of the state. Once these, uh, recommendations were made to the city council, which the city council approved all of those, uh, we did this in three separate rounds until all the money was born. Then OPR, the funding agency, approved all of the intake documentation and justification. The money was then sent to the city, and the city then, uh, distributed the money to the, those grantees. Uh, after the grantees were asked us to, uh, sign some type of agreement that stated how they were gonna use the money, um, and they all did that before they received their funds. And they were also made aware that the city is going to be required to submit an annual report to OPR, the funding agency, for two years after closeout, to report information. Uh, and just this afternoon, they released what that report might look like. And so, it's, it's basic information about, uh, jobs, how many jobs are retained, is that business still in business? There's no penalty if that business isn't still operating at the time you do the report, but that's one of the questions. So, each of these grantees were made aware that the city would be reaching out to them one and two years after closeout to gather some information. Um, and as I said, there was more requests. There was funding available, so not everyone that submitted received grant funds. And then, uh, quite a few that submitted at the maximum request, which was $10,000, received less than $10,000. I think that's, uh, one of the reasons that, uh, the city is attempting to secure another $250,000 to this little business. Uh, I received, uh, two letters from those grantees of, that I'd like to enter into the public hearing record. One is from Susannah Hart with Crumbles. Um, and this was allowed through the, the federal guidelines or the grant guidelines, that people could submit these to be put in the public hearing record. Um, and so, Susannah Hart writes, "I'm writing this to share a little insight on what the COVID Small Business Grant has done for my business, Crumbles, and for me personally. Twenty-twenty, as we all know, was unprecedented disaster. The future of my business, Crumbles, was uncertain at best. I poured all of my available assets into it, so saving the business was at stake. When I received the COVID Small Business Grant in December, it enabled me to stay open and to continue to provide products for my customers. In addition to my business staying open, that also means that I can continue supporting other local businesses by paying rent, buying products, and so on. It has been a blessing." And we have another one from Pam McIntosh, "The sun kind of wonderful today." Uh, "I just wanted to say thank you again to the grant money. It came just in time and was such a godsend. It truly have helped me through a very tough patch." So, um, I guess now, and we'll open it up for any questions that anyone might have. And again, this was the funded, uh, to just finish up the, the grant that was funded.
What question does council have, Ms. Jill? I have one.
Yes.
Did you, did, were, were any businesses, did any business that received these go out of business?
Not that I'm aware, and I haven't really dug deep to find out.
And, uh...
I haven't, I haven't heard of any.
I think it's fantastic. There was a retention of 155 jobs. So, this is just fantastic. So, we thank the Lord for that. What other questions do you have for Ms. Jill?
I just wanna be prepared, because I, I guess in DC, they're doing another COVID relief that we would be ready to jump on it if we can get some more grant money for local business. I think the council would, as a group, would support that as quick as we could. So, I don't know when that will happen, but I think it will be soon.
And I have not, um, since it's going back to the House, I guess, for some additional tweaking, and I haven't kept up with it today, I would hope that once they do their final tweaks, then maybe some information will come out about how much of that money might come through these programs, like the Small Business Grant came through that. I do know that the state has some additional money, that that's why in our next public hearing, we're gonna talk about it, Phase Three.
Okay.
But, uh, there could be more as well.
So, there is, there's already more money?
Yes.
For the Phase Three?
And we are, uh, our next public hearing will talk about Phase Three. But there's, it's a good point, because we'll see what type of additional funds are out there.
I, I will say this to council. We were in contact with AIM today, and we were told that basically the, the bill that was passed by the Senate has gone back to the House for an amendment. But once that's passed, that Scottsburg will be receiving somewhere north of a million dollars. Good. So, that's a very positive thing as well for our city. And again, we have a lot of improvements. Uh, so we'll talk more about the, the bid that we're open today here in just a little bit. But, but this has a hearing. So, Jill, I'm assuming that you were going to present one of those two reports in the near future?
Yes. Uh, I assume that your grant is closed out. So, this is part of the closeout process for your Phase Two.
Okay.
So, uh, once this hearing is concluded, then I can send the closeout documents to the state. The state can start going through their process, and then they will tell us when it is appropriate for us to submit one of those reports. I will tell you that, uh, Phase One grants, which were awarded in probably May of last year, yours is Phase Two, there was a Phase One. The city did submit an application, but it was a first come, first served, and we just missed a cutoff. Um, those were just released today, and I think they're due in June or something like that.
Okay.
The reports. So, uh, they'll let us know when it's our time to submit that for your project, and then we'll, we'll know, um, so it'll probably be about this time next year.
Okay.
The first one due.
Where this says the first hearing, is this, is this a, is this open for public comment as well?
Yes.
Okay.
This public hearing for Phase Two, yes, is open for public comment.
So, does anybody from the public have a question or comment they would like to pose to Ms. Siggasser? Counsel? Okay. Hearing none. I guess we will close this meeting. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Let's now go into, uh, B, Phase Three, the COVID Small Business Grant. This is the second hearing. So, we'll, I'm assuming open public hearing for this as well?
Yes.
So, Ms. Siggasser, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, I'm Jill Siggasser with Wheatley Group, and we are also assistants in the city with Phase Three of COVID Funds. Um, so, uh, these applications, we're applying again for $250,000. This application is due, uh, by four o'clock this Thursday, March eleventh. These are electronic submissions, just like the last. Uh, the same type of funding, so it's funded with money from the CARES Act through Housing and Urban Development, and then passes through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, and then they decide how, what programs they're going to, uh, use to, to expend that money. Uh, this is the first of two required public hearings. If it's awarded, then we'll have another public hearing, like we just closed, um, and, uh, meet the same format. Uh, this is very competitive. The last round, round two, um, there was probably about $12 million available, and, uh, it wasn't as competitive as I thought. So, almost everything that was submitted was funded. Uh, this is not the case for this round. Uh, they received 118 proposals. Phase Two, I think they awarded forty-two applications. They received 118 proposals, uh, at the end of January. And so, uh, we're trying to make this, you know, as competitive as we can. And the award announcements are expected on April fifteenth. So, it'll be a pretty quick turnaround, uh, for that. The maximum grant amount is $10,000 per business, and you have to have 100 or fewer employees to apply. The, uh, the city is required, as in the last one, to collect intake documentation or income documentation, uh, just as part of the process, uh, in order to make sure that the business is qualified. And I also want, uh, everyone to know that self-employed persons or contract employees can apply, but they have to apply separately. So, if, uh, I work as a stylist at a salon and I rent the chair there, then, uh, I'm not an employee of the owner of a salon. I'm a self-employed or a contract employee, and so I can apply on my own. For, uh, other businesses that are not considered microenterprises, like that self-employed person or contract employee, then what we do is put them into a pool, and then at least fifty-one percent of those employees have to be low and moderate income. That is very, the same process that we use in, in around here. Uh, funds can only be used for working capital, uh, such as employee salaries, uh, general operating expenses, inventory. Uh, and we'll also, I know there is, uh, uh, when the PPP funding came out last year, this kind of hit probably after a lot of people already expended their PPP money. Uh, we'll have to watch this closely, because PPP money is available again, and it might hit coincide if you're awarded, because we can't have duplication of benefits. So, if I was to get money for my business and my PPP money to pay salaries for five employees from, I don't know, uh, March first to, uh, May thirty-first, and then I applied to the city of Scottsburg to use that money to pay my employees from March first to May thirty-first, that would be a problem. So, uh, we just have to watch that duplication of benefits, and I think we did a good job checking into that at the last time. We could certainly do this time. Uh, we plan to use the same process, where we have a selection committee. Uh, we give a special consideration against minority and veteran-owned businesses. And then those, uh, recommendations will come back to the city council for approval, and then on to OPR for final approval. Uh, and again, we'll be required to submit two annual reports after closeout. Uh, I received some, uh, a few, uh, letters to be entered into the public hearing record for round three. One was from Charles Hutchinson, uh, Podracy and Sports Canyon Hobby. Uh, he received funds during round two. "Last year, I was recipient of a COVID Small Business Assistant Grant over for $10,000. This money helped greatly with keeping my business open. For the four to six months, we had our doors closed in the public, but open to our vendors. All our pre-ordered products kept coming in, and nothing was going out. To keep my good status with my vendors, I had to keep up a roll back to ground zero, and that would have been devastating. That would have more than likely closed our door. Also, I had zero photo sessions booked for eight months. That speaks for itself." Uh, also received, uh, something from the Corner Barber Shop. We've also got money in round two. Sorry, some of these came in at a very, very end of deadline that they could be included. Uh, "I would like to thank the city of Scottsburg for awarding the Corner Barber Shop with the money we received. It has been tough going for the past year. After we were shut down for COVID, our business has not, has just not been the same. We have had many payments to make, including utilities and payment on our building. It's hard to do with as few customers as we have had. We used to be really busy. Our customers have greatly declined. Just lately, has our business started to pick back up a little. I feel people are still weary of getting out of COVID around. I understand why so many small businesses have shut down. It has greatly helped us out getting the assistance grant, and we greatly appreciate the help it has been to the barber shop. Hopefully, our business will eventually pick back up like it used to be." Again, thanks so much. And then the last one that I got was from Justin Holland, and I didn't have, uh, time to print this out, with Westwood Golf Course. "I wanted to reach out to you and thank you again for the grant that Westwood Golf Course received last year from the COVID Small Business Grant. That grant helped Westwood survive 2020 COVID issues and shutdowns. We hope that 2021 will be better for all. That grant helped keep the doors open at Westwood, and without it, we would have planned to seek financial assistance from somewhere else. The money always helps in a small business like mine, but it also helps give us peace of mind that there is help out there sometimes, and all of my staff and customers are very grateful for the grant. This winter wasn't great due to Scott County getting hit hard with COVID cases and putting us into a red alert stage, which closed off our area, and more importantly, closed down my indoor golf to just using one indoor golf simulator instead of both of them. So, our winter was not the best, but better than the spring of 2020. If another round of COVID Small Business Grants was awarded to Scott County, I know Westwood would apply again, as with several other small businesses in Scott County that have struggled during this ongoing crisis. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the work that you do and the help you have provided to small businesses in Scott County."
Amen.
So, with that, I'd ask if anybody has questions about, um, this, uh, round three? Or any other comments that anyone has to make?
Anything from council? Isn't it a reward to hear the letters? Isn't it fantastic? To see how businesses have been able to maintain their doors open and vendors paid and families fed, so... So, Jill, we, we thank the Wheatley Group for sure for all your hard work with this and helping to obtain this. Listen, open this to the public. Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment regarding our Phase Three COVID Small Business Grant application? Counsel, anything else? Okay. Hearing none. We will close that public hearing there. So, thank you, uh, Ms. Jill, for that. And I take your up again, Jill.
I think, I think the resolution is next, possibly.
Yeah.
Which is the resolution requesting or giving the mayor permission, two things. One is giving the mayor permission to submit the COVID Phase Three application to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And the second part is committing the local match in the amount of $6,250. Um, just, uh, match is not required for this project, just as it wasn't required in Phase Two. But because this is competitive, uh, you get, uh, one point for each percentage of match points. You up to ten points, and so that helps you to be a little bit more competitive than other applications that won't have match funds in it. So, um, I would ask that you consider that resolution.
Let's ask the clerk treasurer. Uh, Ms. Jan, is, uh, are the funds really, really available to be able to match that shooting?
Yes.
Okay.
We would have funds available. We have a grant match on.
Okay. Other questions from council then regarding this Resolution 2021-R-5?
No, I, I, I'd make a motion to pass the resolution.
Very good. We thank you for that. Motion comes from, from Rick. May it please on Resolution 2021-R-5. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Chris is here. Hey, Chris.
Hey.
Hey, welcome, welcome, welcome. So, that's unanimous. Good to hear the aye, 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 everybody. Good to see you. Or hear you. So...
I told you I had an emergency call for work. We had an emergency one, so I'll head back to Scottsburg then.
Yeah, I told you I had an emergency call, uh, that you would get on the phone just as soon as you were available. Did you hear most of that, Chris?
Yeah, I didn't know it was been started up.
Okay, okay, well, great, great. Well, welcome. So, uh, yeah. Okay, uh... Do we pass resolution there? Okay, for new business, uh... We have, uh, ordinance 2021-4, ordinance establishing a new, a new non-reverting fund for training initiatives at the Mid-America Science Park. Before we get into that, because this is gonna tie into business, this is gonna be associated with Vincennes University. And Chuck and Chris, Rada, myself were able to go down, uh, to Vincennes University. And I would like for Chuck just to talk about that from him, please, and...
Well, if we went to, uh, to the, uh, Vincennes campus in Dasher, basically to, uh, look at CAP program that they, uh, that they operate now with, uh, with local manufacturers. Uh, it's an internship kind of program where, uh, where students work, uh, three days a week, I believe, and then they're in class two days a week. Instead of entry-level positions at manufacturers, uh, they, they go into higher-level training, industrial maintenance, and those kinds of things. So, they're actually, uh, in, instead of all the line, the three days that they're working, they're actually doing maintenance tech kinds of things under the supervision of a mentor. So, when they finish their, uh, their studies, then, uh, then they have higher skill levels, uh, are able to make more money. It's a benefit to them, uh, that they can work and pay the tuition as they go, so they come out hopefully without going a lot of money. And then the advantage to the manufacturers, of course, is that, uh, that they have higher-quality, uh, employees who are able to, to do maintenance tech for them. And, and that's just one example, but the other, you know, higher-level things need to be done in the facility. So, anyway, it's a, it's a win-win situation as far as we're concerned. And, uh, I think the plans are to maybe start this with, uh, with students who are coming out of high school, uh, this, this spring, the things to put together. And, uh, then possibly to, uh, to offer it to seniors in high school next year, so that they're able to, uh, in, instead of spending a whole day at, at school, with work release and, and, uh, go out during the day and, and do the CAP program. And Terry, do we want to talk about, premature talk about CNA or...
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Vincennes also intends to offer allied health training here at the Science Park. Initially, it's gonna be, uh, CNA training, uh, you know, for nursing home assistance and those kinds of things. Uh, next year, uh, Trilogy, and, and, uh, Jan, I guess it's okay to mention this too, that with Trilogy, that they had agreed to, uh, to pay for the training for the high school, uh, students next year who, who want to take the CNA training. Uh, it's, uh, I think $1,200 for the course, and, and, uh, Trilogy is wanting to pay the cost of tuition, uh, try to come up with the scales so that those students can work at, uh, Anthenox, which is a Trilogy facility. They can work part-time there. And then, uh, the next step up for those individuals would be a certified clinical medical assistant, which, you know, is a, is a pay raise and, and increased skill level as well. And, uh, they would probably be able to take that next course through the next level of funding. So, you, you can come out and, and you can take the course for no charge. And, you know, you just keep moving up the, the ladder of charge, your skill and the pay, and very little, very little, uh, outlay from, from the pocket. So, opportunities, opportunities for, for people to, uh, invest in themselves and, uh, work their way into a good career right as they come out of high school. So, good things happen.
Amen, amen. One of the things that... One of the things that we're interested in trying to do for our Scottsburg graduates, we're like, we're looking to see more graduates with an idea of what they want to do. And, and, and to me, that's gonna be into basically three areas. And, uh, you know, you may either need to have a vocation or an education. So, we'd like to see a graduate say, okay, I'm going into military service, or I'm going on into secondary education, or I'm gonna go into, maybe this might be the Mid-America Science Park, we were talking about with our partners. So you can go out there and you can get into an internship with training, with working, so they have an idea of what they're getting into. That employer will have an idea of who you're bringing them on. So now we're, we're giving our work, we're giving our, our factories and our workplaces a, a premium offer, which is a new, which is a new student to be able to learn and to be able to support his family in Scottsburg, Indiana for years to come. And, and that's so important, so we, we wanna work with partnership here. Now, what this is about here is that they have, there was a hundred and, close to $200,000 was given to Vincennes University. We've asked for them to return that funding and then we want to, we want to delve that out. It might be for tuition, it may be for different things, but we've asked them to put this back. So that's what we're asking you for tonight here in this, in this ordinance, is to establish a non-reverting fund for the training. And this money will be exclusively for the training. It's not gonna be used for utilities to the Mid-America Science Park, it's gonna be for training of these, of these students.
That, that was the original intent of, of the funding. Uh, and, you know, this thing went a different direction for a lot of reasons, COVID included.
Yes.
But, uh, Mayor and I discussed it and, uh, since funding came from various sources, it'd be, be very difficult, if not impossible, to trace all those, those leads back to where the money first came from. We want it to be, you know, fair, just, ju- just out of the original intent and use the money for training and programming out of the Science Park.
And want to better invest in our own students, right? Exactly. And, you know, we have educators up here, so I think this is gonna be a great idea. So, uh, what question do you have about this? Okay, hearing none, we would entertain a motion to go forward and pass ordinance 2021-4 to establish this new non-reverting fund for training initiatives in the Mid-America Science Park. Have a motion for it.
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rosebeck, a motion. All second. Okay, Bill Hopeless, second. Questions or comments? Chris, did you have a question?
Oh, sir, I was gonna make a motion this evening, but it sounds like we have nothing to go forward, so...
Okay, buddy, that's, that sounds great. And any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's you, Janice. There, so, uh, do we want us to suspend rules or do you wanna wait till next time? What's your pleasure?
We haven't received the money, but I, I mean, I don't think the ground...
We'll wait to receive money.
...would change it, so I, I'm fine making a motion to suspend rules and have a second, third, or fourth, if I have one.
You'll give that, counsel?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So, uh, Chuck makes the motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
All second.
Bill Hopeless, second, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's you, Janice. Thank you very much. Let's go down for announcements now. Uh... Let me talk to you just real quickly about the ADA compliance that the state wants us to go through. We began on making our City Hall, which is in a historic district, which is an historic building, which is Scott County State Bank, and I ADA compliant. So last year, we converted the restrooms here to be ADA compliant. We converted the utility office by new lower counters, uh, sneeze guards, things of that nature. Now we're getting ready to install a new ADA door here, so a person in a handicap can hit the button and come right on in. The doors are wide enough to be able to get access, it's very handy for a handicapped person to go into there. Just to give you an update on that, uh... Let me go down to... On the handbook, we sent you the handbook. We had, we, we took this off the meeting for tonight because we wanted to make sure that you've had time to read the handbook. We said today with all the department heads, we met with the department heads three to four weeks ago at the Mid-America Science Park to say, what are your questions, what are your concerns? This, as you've seen, is warped into about a 99-page handbook that, that they're being able to study, that they can be able to explain this to their employees as well, under them, in their different areas. So we wanna make sure, you guys are gonna be the guys who are gonna pass this, so we wanna make sure that you're able to go through this and have time and not push you in having to give this big reinforcement, you know, to have that done at a certain time. So we wanted to give you plenty of time. If you have any questions, make sure you can call Ms. Jessica, Ms. Jan, Carmen's been real involved. These are the three people that have been so involved in getting this, and Carrie Thompson, and Josh Pickman. That is not Josh Pickman, Carrie Thompson.
Carrie's in a couple of years of us.
That is his pace of the year, but...
So, that's why you did receive on your computers, uh, the handbook. If you need us to print it out for you, we're happy to print it out for you. Uh, just let us know that and, and for you to go through and to highlight, give us a call of any questions you have, because we'll kind of probably bring this up as the next city council meeting for your book. So, uh, but we wanted to explain that to you, just to make sure that we're not pushing anybody. We wanted to make sure that the council, the cap, I mean, I'm sorry, the department heads were okay. Uh, so there were a couple of questions they had in there, so we wanted to address that as well. So, uh, if you have any questions, give us, give me a call, give Jessica a call, Jan a call, you know, so... Uh, also, folks, this is another thing, that this is probably going to be the last session we have, it's gonna be live on Facebook. We've had just a few complaints where, uh, I can't see well, I can't quite hear you well. So, right now, we, we have purchased last year, uh, a camera that's over $2,000. And the quality of filming and the sound is much better. So, uh, they can hear you here, it's typed right in here. This will be recorded tonight and put on tomorrow, uh, after 12 noon. So basically, you're gonna have a one, a few hour delay, but instead of seeing live, you're gonna see it tomorrow after 12 noon. So, uh, so, and that's just due to the quality that we've had, nothing more. We're not saying that the Facebook Live is not the right thing to do, we're saying that the quality is not there. And it's just gonna be a much better quality going into future use here. So we want you to know that, that's what's going on, I announced this and the work works, I want you to know this. So, so folks, next week, City Hall is open, so if you wanna count, you can count, we have plenty of chairs, you can, you can distance here and you could also sit at home with a nice cannoli and a cup of coffee. Boy, wait, what a deal. So, uh, you know, so, uh, what else do we have for tonight?
Terry, you've mentioned, uh, our next council meeting and there, there, uh, I guess we need to have some discussion about, about that meeting, 'cause I know that's a spring break.
Spring break.
And at least two councilmen will be away on vacation. Rick, I, I wasn't sure about you.
No, we're leaving after, but we're leaving like the next day.
Okay. So...
What, what's council?
I, I, no, no, that's, uh, other than handbook, what, what present business do we handle?
In the handbook, what, what could weigh to the...
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, if, if, uh, and, and I'll be here, so I, I don't care, but I, especially if we're gonna talk about handbook and those kinds of things, I'd, I'd certainly like for all councilmen to be present for that.
And we might have an ordinance to bring before we do the handbook. It's one on our drug, uh, there's a drug policy that the references one from several years ago. So, and I know Jessica and the safety director, and James Ritchie both felt like that needed to be updated. So, uh, my suggestion was to let's update that ordinance, so then it's, it's accurate in our handbook.
So that would be covered at the same time as the handbook, or would need to be passed before we consider it?
And how many, is, is there more than one reading of the handbook?
Yeah, there's, they'll leave it through, it's an ordinance.
That's what I, that's what I could assume.
If, if we don't change it prior to the meeting and we're having it at least updated in the handbook, then you would only be able to do the first reading of the handbook within, and the second reading would have to have an amendment so that we could correct that verbiage in the, in the handbook, because it does reference that ordinance number. Am I not correct on that, Josh, unless we put the correct ordinance number in it from the beginning?
Correct.
So that would be whatever you got. If, if we, if we did present it the same night we presented the handbook, we would need to pass it on all three readings in order before we pass the handbook.
What's, what's the timeline to get the handbook, uh, passed?
I don't think there's many changes to this going to make much difference in any, any day-to-day operations, Rick. Uh, there's just been lots of clarification where, you know, there's a little maybe a word put in, so we better understand the process or what we're supposed to do. I, I don't think it would matter, I would prefer to not have a lot of amendments to the handbook, like just to come back. I just think it would be cleaner than us having to do all that, so...
Well, I feel like Chuck, that when you're, when you're having a handbook, and I was in those discussions with the school for many years, it's best to have the whole board or the whole council available. And if we're gonna be, I, I would, if that's the only thing, I, I would think that we would hold up and not meet until, until April.
Well, I'm good with that. Well, I, I'm just gonna be out of town and I have zero problem calling in. And I'll read through the handbook, and I read through most of it today, not all 99 pages, but I guess about 40 something, but, uh, I, I have no problem calling in, so if it's something that is a pressing matter, you could do for...
It doesn't sound like it's pressing, yeah.
The ordinance for that, for the change...
With the drug testing, you know, I, I kind of like all to be involved in that too, because, you know, that, that's, we're only getting... Either way, I'm flexible.
Do we wanna, the ordinance is a little less, do we, do we wanna go ahead and meet the 22nd with Collins for the ordinance? Or do you, you're out of...
Well, I, I think we've got about two ordinances, two different ones, one, one's the handbook and one's the drug testing.
The, the drug policy.
The drug policy.
We would need to get the drug policy passed.
Yeah, but I'm saying, uh, Rick's question is, do we want to go ahead and meet the 22nd about that...
Drug policy and get it passed, so that in April, we're...
And I, and I'm fine with that, if Christian and Chris are all right with us meeting and, you know, if, of course, we have other business, we'll consider that as well, but, but at least, uh, you know, take a look at that, that night.
How does Chris, Chris, how do you feel about that? See there?
I'm apparently here, Chuck, Chuck's shut down, I'm apparently here with...
What they're talking about, Chris, is, is that, uh, either we, we cancel the meeting on the 22nd or we have a meeting with those that are here, and if you're not gonna be here, would you be able to call in, sir? Uh, Feb. 1, uh, for, for March the 22nd, sir? Does that look like a good date that you would be able to call in? I'm sorry, March the 22nd, two weeks from today. Okay, okay, he's saying he could, he, he would be able to do that, if, if that's your pleasure. So...
Is everybody... I, I'm gonna be here, sir.
I'll be here, I was gonna say, it doesn't matter, so...
So we're gonna have three councils, Bill, will you be here as well?
Listen, let's go ahead and plan the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, let, let's do this, we'll, we'll plan the meeting, the main topic of discussion will be the drug policy. Jessica can get that out, you know, in advance. If Christian or Chris feel like they're, you know, there's a question, there are issues, the things they wanna call in for, then they're welcome to, won't be expected to, if they, if they're fine with the policy, then, you know, go have dinner and we'll, we'll handle it here, we'll be here.
Think about it.
Yeah, but, but if you have, if you have issues, let us know or feel free to call us. Fair enough.
Chris, did you hear any of that?
Yeah, I did, yes, I'm, I'm planning on being there, I don't, I don't leave until a week after, so...
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay.
Okay, okay, that sounds good, buddy, that sounds good, buddy. Okay, so, uh, so at this point, we'll go forward then, we'll try to keep things as limited as possible, so...
Then we'll be ready for the handbook discussion first meeting in April.
Yes, 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 that sounds fine, so we won't discuss handbook, so... Uh, I guess another thing we have is regarding painting. And I wanna have Ms. Baker address some of this, but as you know, the city put forward a, uh, an application for a community crossings grant, and we were awarded something like $980,000 in change. And, uh, and with that, we can pave a third of Scottsburg. And, and we're gonna literally pave the entire street, so we're gonna start cheering on US 31 and go all the way down. So, but with that, we had a bid open today, I would like for Ms. Baker maybe to address that. Ms. Baker, can you address that with city council, please?
Yes, we had seven...
You have a microphone?
No, I think they can hear me, surely.
They can hear you, but maybe the folks at...
Oh, yes, they can. Uh, they had seven, we had seven companies come in today with bids. Um, excellent turnout, excellent turnout. Uh, the Board of Works made a motion to award, uh, Omara this evening with a low bid of $939,929.60. Um, like the mayor said, we tried to pick sections in the city. I have applied for the next community crossing grant and hope to hear late May if you receive that or not. But the bids were low, so we won't have to have as much match money and can keep going for more grants.
So with this, we can pave a third of Scottsburg, we got another grant, we can pave the second, third of Scottsburg, and hopefully get the third grant. We'll pave all of Scottsburg. So that's our goal, is to pave all of Scottsburg. Uh, we had seven different companies, like Ms. Baker said, all very positive companies, for $3,000, $4,000 between the first and second bid. I mean, so it was very close bidding, uh, but Omara bid was a little bitter on that, and so the bid was awarded to Omara, just to keep everybody in knowledge of what's going on. Uh, you know, so, Ms. Harvey, what do you have?
Uh, the one thing I would like to say, and I don't know if council has kept up with it, and, but I had spoken with Greg March recently, and I'm not, uh, like I said, I don't know if you all are aware or not, but kudos for locking in and making the choice, as you did on February the 8th, to go with the bank for the financing, because about five days after you did that, the start of going up and it has raised about 45 points just in the last month. So, you've got, uh, the rate you got would have been higher had you have waited. So, and I'm sure Chase Harden's glad to, for that too, so on his behalf, uh, you know, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, the timing was just in time. So, just in, just in time inventory, just in time approval, so good job, guys, good job. Uh, we wanna give a kudos to Chief Zellers as well. Uh, his, his force has had 721 contacts pull overs. I, I just recently saw three Scottsburg PD officers at three places pulled over at three different locations. So, we're becoming more aggressive and, uh, and part of cleaning up Scottsburg is that, is enforcing the ordinances that this council puts forth. And, uh, we want you to know as well that we have, with bank approval, because we contacted them to say, you know, you have an empty house, waiting, you know, and, and until you get that sold, we have people housing in there, squatting in there. And so they've given us the opportunity to change locks, to put trespassing signs up and arrest people if they're going in those properties. So that's what we're doing. So, uh, just to give everybody a heads up of what's going on there. So, Chief, thank you very much, doing a great job, tell the guys, great job.
I will, thank you.
So, uh, Jess, what do you have?
I'm nothing.
We're good, we're good, okay, okay. Uh, anything else? Anything, okay, we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Quick motion.
Mr. Evans, thank you very much.